Counselor, Councilman.
Yeah, you do, I'm a bit lower.
Oh, we do, we've got all three of us here, so. We'll start out with Travis giving us our prayer and then afterwards Scott will lead us in a pledge.
Father in heaven, we come before thee this evening to thank thee for the opportunity we have to meet together as a city and to be able to have a city council meeting and discuss the issues of the city and be able to address those and to move forward to make our city better. We ask thee to please bless us to have a civil discussion and be able to have those things discussed that are important and be able to make good decisions. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Will the audience please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing on the agenda is the consent agenda and it's approval of the September 20th council meeting minutes. Do we have any discussion or do we have a motion to approve of?
Mayor, I'll move that we approve the consent agenda, which is the September 20, 2017 council meeting.
Okay, we've got approval, we got a, or a motion, do we have a second? Have a second? Seeing any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Poles? Okay, motion carries. Next thing on the agenda is the public forum. If anybody is here tonight that would like to stand up to the microphone and address the mayor and council. Going once, twice, a lot of people for nothing. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public forum. Next thing is staff reports, if we have any staff that needs to report.
Mayor and councilman, I talked to some of you and I sent an email last week, but they are, company's filming downtown, but they will be filming on Friday. They'll probably close the road sometime around noon and it'll go late into the night. And it's just the one block from Utah Avenue to First South, so it's the one block of downtown. It is a Hallmark Christmas movie. I can't remember the name of the actress, she did one a couple of years ago. But they're setting up a little bit today, we've had some of our crews helping. They will pay us for the time and effort that we've put in. There will be a couple of police officers that'll be there on Friday. But hopefully everything goes smooth, most of the business, all the business owners have been talked to. They're gonna do some filming at Eli's and then outside along the main street. So hopefully we won't inconvenience the public, the businesses are still open to the public. You just can't park in front of the business. You'll have to park behind or on the side and then walk, walk during the, while they're filming, but you just walk to the business, so just wondering about that.
Okay, any other staff?
Mayor and councilman, I'd just let you know that we're doing our annual coloring contest for the elementary schools this year. That'll take place next Wednesday, the 11th. We'll be taking the children up from the elementary schools about quarter after and should have them back to the station by 11:30 to start doing a little program and feed them some good healthy food. Hot dogs and chips and. But anyway, do you guys have time or be around? Would love to have you there, come say hello and participate or just show up and say hi and hang out, so. Be at the fire station.
What's the date here?
The 11th, Wednesday the 11th.
And time is what?
11:30, 11:30 to 12:00, we'll be eating and doing a little program and then we're trying to have the kids back by 12:30, so.
Please send us an email.
Yeah, send an email. So what we typically do is we send out posters for the kids to color and then we select a person from each grade. So typically we'll pick up five to six students from each elementary school. We'll pick them up in an ambulance or an engine and then we take them back. We'll take them in an engine or ambulance. So if they've brought in one to the station, we get the other on the way back, so. Anyway, and things are going busy, they're staying busy in the fire ambulance. I still stand, averaging about six calls a day, so some days you get a little bit of quiet time and other days we're going all day and all night, so.
Okay, any other staff? Okay, Linda?
I don't have anything.
Mike?
Just a couple of things, mayor. Chamber Business of the Month was recognized on Monday. This is at the America First Credit Union and a few people there, it's a very good event. They're gonna have the Great Pumpkin Hunt this month and I don't see anybody here from the chamber right now. I thought they were gonna have that presentation for Business of the Month.
That's what I thought, we got them down here in the next couple.
And then, of course, they're part of the sponsors for the candidates' night a week from tomorrow, so they're gonna be pretty busy this month.
And just a couple of things, first of all, thoughts and prayers to those in Las Vegas. That's closer to home than we would like it to be. And while the city is not allowed to debate any laws, I think we would do well to, to remember to be mindful of others. We don't know what the reasons are, but I think if we try to be more open and more kind to others, we can eliminate some of these things without getting into the other issues which will be debated at a state and national level. We appreciate our first responders and all that they do. We appreciate our city employees and all that they do. I also have had the opportunity to work with the library board and I want to say that Dallas is doing a fantastic job with the library. They appreciate all that they do and there's some amazing things. We did ask our city manager to look at some carpet and some drinking fountains, see if we can get them fixed up and get that a little bit more serviceable. They'll probably have to possibly debate it on their budget agenda, but let's put it on our radar.
I go to Councilman Hilo, but he has, he's out of town for the night, so we can excuse him. And Councilman Phillips?
Yeah, just to echo what Doug says on public safety. But on, we found the storm drain issue on Fifth West and First, Second South. So we're in the process of tearing up the gutter, putting in a sump. Should alleviate the problem if the sump overfills the travel north, or I mean west, sorry, west. That's being addressed and should be, maybe just kinda worried about west. Yeah, that's what it is what it is right now, so.
Okay?
Mayor?
Yeah?
I've changed my mind. Dave and I took a ride this afternoon up over the loop. And if any of you have had an opportunity to do that, or have had an opportunity, you need to do it. It is beautiful up the canyon. And we passed so many people, I mean, it was so busy. And I made the comment that I almost feel bad for Nephi because their side isn't nearly as pretty as ours. But it was beautiful, so if you get a chance, go up, the scenic highway, thank you.
Take a walk up for a bit.
Yeah, I bet that's pretty too, or go golf. Golf eighteen holes at Gladstand, you see it all.
Okay, again, keeping our memories, Las Vegas is unfortunate that happens. And Doug said it's hitting a little close to home now, so. It can happen anywhere and it's just a sign of times, so. Beware of where you're at and be aware of your surroundings and that's one of the main things anymore. Always look at places you connect with places and stuff like that. I know Orem and a few of these other towns, cities have been doing a mass, just like a training on what to do when you're in a situation like that, so. Anyways, kinda looked that over and like I say, it's just kinda a sign of the times and we, our prayers go out to them. Okay, next thing on the agenda, do we have any scouts here tonight, here for scouts? If not, we'll go ahead and pass that. And next thing is, I'm gonna turn it over to Kim for the mayor's youth recognition award.
Okay, the first one is from Mount Nevo Junior High. It is Quentin Hadlock, so if he wants to come on up here. We'll wait for the mayor before we read. Give me just a second, go get your certificate. Okay, this is Quentin from Mount Nevo Junior High. Quentin Hadlock is an outstanding student. He maintains high grades and achievements even in honors courses. He is also an outstanding example and regarded highly by his peers. Quentin is an active member of the HOPE squad in his third year. He's continually assisting other students and directing them to see the counselors when they need it. And for those of you who don't know what the HOPE squad is, it is something that was developed by Greg Cutnell and it's a suicide prevention technique that the schools are trying and they get kids to talk to other kids and these kids are trained to then refer the kids to counselors or an adult who can help them if they're having suicidal thoughts or issues. And so recently a poll in a poll among the students in our school, he received the most votes as a student. Others can talk to who cares about his fellow students. And this is how they actually choose the kids for the HOPE squad. They poll the whole student body and the kids with the most votes get on the HOPE squad. Their kids, people feel comfortable in talking to if they have an issue. And so that is great, he got the most votes out of the whole student body. So that means that the kids like him and they feel like he's reliable. We have seen examples of his service and kindness to others during the few years at Mount Nevo Junior High. Time and again, he has helped the students who need a good mentor. Congratulations, Quentin. Okay, the next one is from Easton High School and it's Hayden McDowell. Come on up here. Hayden McDowell is the daughter of Suzie and Eric McDowell and she currently resides in Santaquin, Utah. Her interests include working in the front office of the high school, spending time with friends and family, including her little dog named Norbert. Hayden's goals are to graduate high school, go on a mission, and attend college. She hopes to find a career that she loves. Her extracurricular activities include the National Honor Society, Lions Roar newspaper, the pride broadcast, and her job. So when asked about education, Hayden said, "I am so passionate about hard work and being recognized." Sometimes test scores don't show a student's true potential. As a senior, I've been thinking pretty seriously as to what I want in a career and teaching has continually popped up. I love kids, I love learning, and I love Easton High School. Mrs. Davis and Mrs. Talan in the front office said that Hayden is the nicest person on this earth. They praised her positive attitude and willingness to do anything. We could ask her to clean the most horrible toilet and she would be happy to do it. Mrs. Davis said, "When an upset parent calls, she totally turns the situation into a positive experience." And she's always smiling and always willing to help. You don't even have to ask her to do something because she is already doing it. So congratulations. Okay, and our last one is Addie Slider from Easton Junior High. Come on up, Addie. Addie is always sweet and friendly to everyone, really cares about people and their feelings. And that was from Mrs. Paxton. Mrs. Bragg said, "Addie is a bright spot in V-Hall. She always says hi to people by name, compliments constantly, and encourages people to make good choices. She is awesome." Mrs. Wilson said, "She's always happy and kind to everyone. She works hard in her classes and does her best. She makes your day a little brighter when she smiles at you." Miss Simmons said, "Addie is very kind to all. She's always concerned for others and she's always looking for the good she can do for them. She is very deserving of this work," and she said, "I could honestly go on and on." Mr. Swanson, who is the principal, said, "Addie is always friendly to all students. She enjoys school and she's willing to help others enjoy school. Addie will always give others a high five. Easton Junior High is a better school because of Addie."
Center right there, and we'll let parents take pictures. The council come down.
I can do this.
Can you do that?
Oh, I need some.
Parents, you're welcome to come up in the front here and take a picture.
No, I can get there.
Everybody ready? Congratulations. Again, we appreciate the students and all the hard work they do and it's just kinda neat to be able to recognize them. Next thing on the agenda is the Chamber Business of the Month. I'll turn it over to the chamber. Lorraine?
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to come and give our Business of the Month award tonight. Also want to just let everyone know that we are starting our Great Pumpkin Hunt, which goes throughout the month of October. And if you wanna see which businesses have the cards so they can get those filled out, go on our Facebook or our website, we've got all that information on there. And it's always a really fun one, we always have some great prizes at the end, so well worth taking the time to do. So I'm excited for Business of the Month, I love it every month, but some months are really special. And this month, it's America First Credit Union here in Payson. And it's really fun to work with people that you see, their dedication, their commitment, and their devotion to our community. And even though she doesn't live in our community, Jade is one of those people that has made Payson, you know, her home, her heart is here. And she is going to be serving next year as the president of the chamber. And so she's taken on that challenge and that commitment and it already shows in everything she does. It's very rare that you see a chamber event that Jade isn't there with her sleeves rolled up and making sure that it goes off really well. It's very rare that you see a community event that she and her team aren't there doing the same. So we are really excited to have Jade and America First Credit Union as our Business of the Month this year. So thank you. And she gave me a quarter if I wouldn't make her talk.
I'd give it too if you make her talk.
Oh, hey, any other bits?
I appreciate that, thank you, Lorraine. I would diddle that for her and her team, it's fun. I was born and raised in Payson, if that makes any difference, but we have recently moved to Fountain Green, but I'm still Utah County at heart and Payson is always home, so thank you very much.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is preliminary plat approval and I'll turn that over to Bill.
Yes, mayor, it's actually preliminary and final plat approval. This is our first project that is coming to the city council without a public hearing. And so we have recently amended our ordinance, public hearings are taking place at planning commission meeting. We did have a public hearing last week and we did not have anyone participate. We didn't even have anybody other than the applicants. We didn't have anybody else in the room, so we were pretty lonely. But I guess we'll take that as the neighborhood's excited to see this move forward. I think that, you know, self-help homes has been great in our community and they've reached out to other property owners around if, you know, when needed and to talk to them and work through some issues. But again, tonight we're requesting preliminary and final plat approval of the Nevo Gateway subdivision. It's a 10-lot subdivision located on the east side of 600 East between 300 North and 400 North. That's the final plat that's shown there. It will be, the homes will be developed as part of the self-help homes program. And the applicant has just continued to work through all of the conditions of approval. They're down to like three. And one of them, they cannot afford with until the approval is given tonight and that is the reduction in the width of the cul-de-sac. So as you are deliberating and making a decision on this, please keep that in mind that that would have to be part of your approval. They're requesting an eight-foot reduction in the overall width of the cul-de-sac in order to accommodate the lots due to the configuration of the parcel. So with that, staff is just requesting that it be approved with conditions.
Okay, so it was approved to the camp, or to the planning.
Yes, so the planning commission did recommend approval with a couple of minor changes to the drawings, which we will get to the applicant. The applicants are here, we have Brent Bluth and Brad Bishop with self-help homes. If you have any questions for them, otherwise it's pretty straightforward, we're just looking.
Okay, do we have a?
Cul-de-sac thing, that's, we did the same for the other project, right?
For Cowen Corner, that is correct.
Okay, do we have any other discussion or do we have a motion? Did, so I'm just reading over the furnaces concern, was that addressed?
So yes, we have been in contact with the furnaces to talk about that. There has been a geotechnical report that's been done on the site. They actually have to remove about five feet of fill that's there on that northeast corner. And so it will change the elevation of the lot. They are proposing a small swell that will be developed and improved on the east side to help with any, you know, stormwater that may go on adjacent properties. But there will be a significant amount of fill material that will be removed as required by the geotechnical report.
Okay. Any other discussion? Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve the preliminary and final plat approval contingent upon staff recommendations.
Now it's including the cul-de-sac. Do we need to say anything exactly on the cul-de-sac?
Including the reduction.
Including the reduction, okay. Okay, we got a motion and a second? Is there any other discussion? Linda?
No.
Yes.
Aye, your name?
Aye, sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Next thing is a resolution on the authorization to submit reimbursement for the 2017 municipal recreation grant.
So we do have a deadline of October 28th, I believe it is, to submit for reimbursement for the municipal recreation grant. Staff would like to request, because the filming has not been completed, we're using that money towards the filming for a commercial. And because the filming isn't completed, we are requesting that Utah County extend the deadline. And so there's no guarantee that we'll get the extension, but we are sure going to try if we can get authorization from the city council to apply for that extension and authorize the mayor to sign the request.
Is that just information only or?
We need a motion.
You need a motion on that?
To actually, to adopt the resolution to apply for the extension.
We got a motion or do we have any discussion on that?
Is it a commercial for Payson?
Yes.
But if I'm those leaves right now.
I know, he's working on it.
Okay.
Okay, I need, the motion that we adopt the resolution, 10-417, requesting a extension for the municipal recreation grant. Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We got a motion, a second, any other discussion? All right, Scott?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Next thing is the discussion regarding the surplus sale of the ambulance to Woodland Hills. Turn that over to Dave. Oh, no, it is, the annexation regarding the annexation policy plan boundaries with Sanquin City. Maybe I had another one there, tell me.
So just quickly, we, this parcel that's highlighted in yellow there. So we were, staff was contacted by the real estate agent for the owner of this property and they would like to annex this property into Payson City. Payson City and Sanquin City have come to an arrangement back in 2011, I believe, that because our annexation policy plans overlap, which is shown in this map. So right in the center of this map, you've got I-15, so everything on the west side from where we've currently annexed all the way south to the High Line Canal by Sanquin is, or in Sanquin, is not only in Payson City's annexation policy plan, but it's also in Sanquin's annexation policy plan. So there's an overlap between the two communities. Well, in 2011, the two cities came together to say a number of things in this agreement, but one was that if any annexation were to occur in this overlap area and even the overlap area on the east side of the freeway that you can see, that the other city, that both cities have to consent to that. And so Dave and I met with their city manager and their community development director to talk about the possibility of this acreage here being annexed into Payson that's currently adjacent to our municipal boundaries, but it is in the overlap. And so we discussed some different options, we discussed the terms of the contract. And we felt like where it's been six years since the two cities came together with this agreement that maybe we need to revisit again. But one of the terms in that annexation agreement is that, or in that interlocal agreement, is that the two cities will work together on putting a land use plan together for that overlap area so it wouldn't matter which community it was in. I know that Sanquin has a lot of agricultural pursuits in this particular area. Payson City wants to see those agricultural pursuits continue. There's a lot of orchards in that area, there's a lot of farms.
Didn't they have a 10-year limit on that, interlocal? I wanna say that was a 10-year deal.
I've got it right here.
I think you're right.
I don't know, it's 10-year renewable, I know that there is some language in there about 50-year, but maybe that was for the interchange area. So he's checking. But anyway, we had discussed with staff of getting feedback from our councils of how they would like to move forward. At a staff level, neither city is really interested in pushing any annexation forward. But where there has been a request, we wanna make sure that the two communities are on the same page as we're giving feedback to these property owners. And so it was suggested by Sanquin that where we are doing our general plan update, that maybe we request as part of that update that there be a plan prepared specifically for this area where Sanquin participates. And we do a joint plan together, they've even indicated that they'd be willing to participate financially with the plan for this area, so we can. So we can continue to follow the terms of the interlocal agreement. So with that, we're basically bringing it to you as more of an information. But if there's discussion that's necessary, if you feel strongly one way or the other, or do we need to pursue the annexation? Or do we need to hold off with any annexations in here until the general plan and that other plan is completed? Just want to get some feelings from you so when we get the report back from Santaquin that's doing the same thing, then again, we're being.
My only issue with the whole thing would be if they're going to annex again, we put a time on it and when they have to start building in there. Because I think this was our biggest issue before is it was just more of a line grab.
It is a 10-year agreement.
That's what I thought.
There can be some extensions if the councils decide.
And I'm all good for it. I'm 100% for it. But let's just make sure Santaquin's happy with it. And we, we just say, if you're gonna, if you're gonna do it, then let's, I don't know. I don't know how everybody else feels. But where it's in the middle and it was it. And it was pretty.
Let's put the plan together.
Yeah, it was pretty contentious when we did the whole deal there.
But things changed a little bit.
Yeah, it's changed a lot, but.
My only question is, what is the landowner?
If Santaquin's good with it and wants to work with it, I'd say let's just do it.
Yeah, my only question is, what is the landowner? Are they okay with that approach that we're kind of go through that planning process? Or do they really want to push this?
Do we know what they want to do?
They haven't really pushed it to. They've just inquired. I mean, they haven't submitted any plans. They haven't submitted a petition. They had just reached out to staff to say, what are the possibilities? And that's where we had notified that we have this arrangement with Santaquin.
Did you go back to that last slide? And then point staffs for the focus. So show us where it is on that map.
So I wonder if I've got my pointer.
If you would, please.
Sorry. We'll see who finds it first, Mark. I've got mine.
I'll cut things here on it.
So. It is this parcel right here.
So it's ex-hoselife.
Yeah, so this has already been annexed into the city.
Oh.
And so it's this parcel here. So they're immediately adjacent to. I have not had a conversation with the owner. I've only talked with the real estate agent, told them what the situation was, had a brief conversation of where utilities are located. I mean, they were asking, you know, what is, what's zoning of the property now? What does the land use plan show for future density? Where are the utilities located? So they do realize that utilities are still located, you know, quite a distance away from this parcel. So I don't know if they've got immediate plans for development or if it's just increasing the value of the land by being within a municipality. It could be any of those, but I can't answer.
If Santaquin wants to go through and we want to work out a deal zoning and all of that wise, I'm all good for it.
So it's north, it's just right across the street north of Taylor Ridge.
Okay, anybody?
My only comment is, let's not, kind of, once this hearing tonight's done, let's not just put that aside. Let's get the planning going. But I'm with you, mayor, I think.
And we'll notify you.
And make sure that the neighbors know out there what's going on too. Make sure that the neighbors get involved and know what's going on out there.
Well, and I think that will be the benefit of working with Santaquin and putting a subset, you know, of a plan together for this areas. There'll be a lot of opportunity to work with those landlords and the workshop owners on future plans in this area.
Okay. That it? All right. Discussion regarding the sale of surplus ambulants to Woodland Hills. I'll turn that over to Dave.
Mayor, council, we have had a request from the town of Woodland Hills. They would like to purchase one of our surplus ambulances. We have purchased a couple of new ones. In our personnel policy, we do have provision that if we're working with other governmental entities, we can donate, we can dedicate, we can work with those entities without having to go and put it on a public surplus website and get bids on it. In the past, we have, I think with one small city, we actually have donated a piece of equipment because they were in need and they couldn't afford it. Woodland Hills offered to pay us $8,500, which, you know, our, the ambulance department thinks that's a fair price. Larry, who does our surplus sales for surplus property, said we may get more money, but we may get less. So he felt like it was right in that area. And so we just brought it to the council. If you're okay, we'd like to approve having to sell out Woodland Hills for $8,500 and let them have the ambulance.
We got any discussion on this?
No, I'll make the motion to approve it.
Okay, no motion. We got a second. Okay, Linda?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion approved. All right, next thing, do we have a motion to go into RDA?
So moved.
Second. Okay, we got a motion in a second to go into RDA. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Okay, now do we have, we're now into RDA redevelopment agency. We have a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
We got a second.
I'll second.
Got a motion in a second to go into public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Okay, we're now into public hearing for approving the sale of public property for development in the business park. Turn it over to Dave.
Mayor, council, this is a map of what we advertised and what we posted. This is the city-owned property in the business park. As the council knows, we've had contracts with Coldwell Banker to help us market this. And they also marketed some other properties in the business park. Under our ordinance and under state law, when there's a piece of property, in our case, in our ordinance, it's over an acre, we're required to have a public hearing before we move forward with the sale of that property. So we've had an offer on this property right there. Sorry, I'm shaky. But, and we were, we're gonna chop this off right here so that little part right there will stay in the city for some landscaping and for location assigned and some other utilities. But, so they're proposing to purchase this property right here. It's just four acres. And it will be split into two parcels. He's planning on putting two buildings on there. The offer is $2 a foot, which is, I think, 348,000 is what they would sell it for. Just for reference, we have, we have had a public hearing on this part right here. This, we've sold to plunder. They're in the process of building a building as well. We included all the other parcels, public, city-owned parcels, so that we just put the public on notice that we are looking to sell these properties for development in the business park so that if we do get a buyer, we can move forward. So that's, that's the proposal today. It is a public hearing and then we can field any questions.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Do we have anybody in the public that would like to come forward? See none? Do we have a motion to close public hearing?
So moved. Second.
We got a motion in a second to go out of public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Now out of public hearing. Do we have any discussion or a motion by the RDA? There's a motion.
Here's, I move that we approve the real estate purchase contract that is presented to us tonight. I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Linda?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Do we have a motion to go out of RDA?
I'll make that motion to go out of RDA.
Do we have a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Okay, then we're now out of RDA, back into council. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. We've got like two more minutes.
We did it.
It's a new record. Yeah, that one was.